Are you all right? All right, good evening. I'd like to open the September the 12th, 2023 Planning and Zoning Mission Meeting. And we can start, please, with the Pledge of Allegiance.
Our pledge of allegiance is applied. And to the Republic, the Constitution stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. At this time, I'd like to introduce themselves. Bob, you want to start?
Bob Legner, Commissioner.
Mr. Cooney?
Douglas Cooney, alternate.
Penny Kessler, Commissioner.
Ken Stevens, Commissioner's Chair.
Kitty Grant, Commissioner.
Paul Shandley, Commissioner.
Staff.
Beth Kabagin, Director of Planning.
Amanda Martinez, Recording Secretary.
Dave McCollum, Land use Coordinator.
Thank you very much. Let me just read in the audience, our personal use of electronic devices. Please note for the record that any personal electronic devices used by the Commission members is for the purpose of reviewing materials located in the Google Drive on the town's website. First item on the agenda is a continued public hearing for TANP Associates LLC. For the record, I will be refusing myself at this time.
Well, Mr. Olson is handing out the site plan, I assume. Just note for the record that the Commission was waiting for two reports in regards to this application. One was from the Health Department, which we have received. There also was a memo from the Police Department, which is located in the Google Drive also.
That was exactly what I was going to say. My understanding is the reports have been received. And that was the reason the hearing was kept open. We also kept the hearing open to get a landscape plan completed, which we have done and submitted for the record. I'm no landscape architect, but I can tell you that across the front, there's some lomer shrub type things. The only note I'd make is in the back, where the old railroad bed was, we did not put in any landscaping there. We've left it as clear, which I think is the appropriate treatment for the old railroad bed. And we'll plant a wildflower mix in that area. There'll be a little retaining wall, and so that would be behind that. David, maybe can you call up the landscape plan on the screen? And I can point to your Assistant Mission Members in locating various things. David, you're muted. I'm sorry, Attorney Olson, just bear with me while I get that up on the screen. No, it's the landscape plan, which we spent it on Friday. It's not part of that plan package. Okay.
May not be up there. When did you submit it on Friday?
By email. On Monday, sorry, Monday.
I'm not seeing it in the Google Drive, Attorney Olson.
Well, they have it in front of them.
Yes, but the people who are Commission members on the screen do not. David, if I email it to you, can you call it up?
Yes, sir.
Can you give me one moment, please? I'm sorry. Yeah, I guess I kind of assumed we'd have it up on the screen.
And rightly so.
Okay. Sorry, that's updating folder. So let me continue talking while I try to get this up. There is one large maple tree on site that Abigail Adams, the landscape architect of Lake Ave, divested the civil engineer has some drainage running right through it. And he's going to look at that and see if we can move it around to save the tree. But we won't know that for a while. That's all I have. I don't know whether you want me to keep trying this or...
So the the police and the Health Department were okay, everything was fine.
Yes, Beth noted for the memos that we received, Health Department memo, and during view actual comments.
I didn't think so, because the coverage was going to be
Correct.
self-contained, more or less, I guess.
Correct, so maybe we can move along in the hearing while we try to get this available. That's all that we have.
Okay, that's all you have?
Yes.
Okay, well then, how about the public? Does anybody have any questions for this application applicant?
I have a question.
Please come up and give your name and address, please.
Thank you, my name is Nancy Sudek, 2 Ridgedale Road. My question is, because I just didn't understand it, I don't think, where is the driveway on Whittlesey going to go into the property? If something has it, they could show me.
David, can you call up the site plan, please? Yes.
That's a different project.
No, it's not.
No, that's not, this is Jane P. Oh, this is Jane.
This is Jane P.
Oh, Jane.
Jane P, this is Whittlesey.
Yeah.
Wow.
Don't scare me like that.
I can answer that after all the members have spoken.
Okay, if he could answer, it's fine. It's just I drove up Whittlesey and I'm looking, I'm like, where the heck is the driveway going to go? It's going to be dangerous no matter where it goes, unless it's sharing a driveway perhaps. But if he could, if he could answer, that's great, thank you.
He will. Okay, and with anyone else here?
Diane Ryan, 13 Karen Drive. I looked at the plans for the senior, supposed to be senior house, senior
Fifty-five and over, right.
Right. And it doesn't look like the downstairs bathrooms have a lot of room in their bathrooms for people to move around with wheelchairs or, you know, there's a hallway that's kind of tight. So I asked you to look at that, because I think typically, you know, seniors need to have a shower that's, you know, a shower pan that's low and a little more room to move. Like if you go to a hotel or something, they have much more room in there for people with wheelchairs. Now, I don't know, maybe you're not expecting fifty-five and over, but there are people that will need that. So that was my concern. And also the driveway issue, I brought up at the last meeting, because it didn't, we didn't have where it is in relation to the other driveways on Whittlesey and where it is in relation to Plum Trees.
Well, that's correct.
Good, thanks.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to speak on the subject here in this room? Okay, David, how about online? Is there anybody on Zoom who would like to address this subject?
Madam Chair, I'm seeing that Paula Antolini has her hand raised.
Ms. Antolini, you have a question?
Good evening, Commission. My concern is also about the driveway in several ways. One is, is there an exact
Please forgive me, you did not give your address.
Oh, I'm sorry, nineteen Jacobs Lane.
Thank you.
My concern is about the driveway also going on to Whittlesey. This text is very tiny on my screen. Is there a measurement given from the intersection where the traffic light is to where the driveway will start? Also, there's another driveway right after where I'm assuming they're going to place it. It appears that they're going to place it somewhere near the back part of the property, going behind another residence. So I have many concerns about the placement. And I have a question as to why it cannot go on Plum Trees. I believe that the attorney for the applicant stated that it was, quote, "the obvious place to put" the driveway on Whittlesey. I don't see it that way. I see a whole frontage on Plum Trees. And I think out of the two roads, Whittlesey is the more traveled. I'd like to comment on the police report that I just read today. I didn't see anything that mentioned that the police knew it was a fifty-five and over housing project. And that said, that means that the fifty-five and over will be exiting and entering that driveway onto Whittlesey with buses, school buses, and parents with children in the car coming and going. I would think that would be concerning. And I also looked at it from the other direction. Seems like there's a curve coming from the other direction. So I think that that is the more detrimental placement of that driveway. And I'd like to ask why that driveway can't go on the other side of the property, which is next to a driveway that is on a property, as we look at this this illustration, to the left, which is what, is that east? What is, which direction is that, or west? I'm just very, very concerned. I'm totally against placing the driveway on Whittlesey. And I feel that the police or anyone else might not have been informed that there are elderly people going to be using that driveway. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. Would there be anybody else, David, you think? You see anyone else?
I'm not seeing any other hands raised at this time, Madam Chair. I will just put out a reminder that for anyone who does want to offer public comments that is on Zoom, you can use the reactions icon in the toolbar at the bottom of the Zoom app and click on the raise hand button.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. I've been able to get the document and it is sitting in my help box waiting to be sent and then make sure why it's not sending, but just working on it. So David, when you receive that, please put it up on the screen. But in the meantime, can you put the site plan up, back up? Driveway location. This is Plum Trees Road. This is Whittlesey. Driveway location is right here. This is the location of where Whittlesey used to be, where it used to go right down here until it was relocated. So that's the driveway right there. There's no measurement, except for this big giant line that says two hundred feet to controlled intersection. So it's two hundred feet away. The next driveway up serves the BRT condominium complex, which is five to six times the size of this. The next driveway after that serves Reynolds Ridge. Again, five to six times the size of this within much more senior population. There is no concern about Whittlesey Drive being able to handle elderly people. Not that I consider fifty-five and older to be elderly, even though I just turned fifty-five years.
Be real, be careful with this.
So, you know, let's not go there. As we explained at the first hearing, all of these units, well, none of these units are being built as ADA compliant units. The requirement for that is if you have a hundred units in development, you have to provide ADA compliant units. So we don't mean any building requirement to do that. That being said, all of the units in the bathrooms are capable of being ADA compliant. There's enough room, and if one of the buyers says to the seller, hey, I really need this to be ADA compliant, we will assemble it so that that can be done. The things like a grab bar in the shower, there will already be wood behind the wall that can support the grab. So that stuff will be there. All that would have to be done would be to install the fixtures to make that happen. Any of the units, all the units, whatever needs to be done for that buyer. Well, obviously, once we've sold all the units, if a buyer in ten years needs that, they're going to do the work themselves. But again, capable of doing that. The reason we don't plan for it is that particularly countertops, the counters have to be lower in an ADA compliant unit, and that makes it very unattractive to everybody else. So you need a specific user to select that and pay for it in order to make that attractive. So that's the answer to that question. David has gotten the landscape plan up. Can you scroll down a little bit, David? So the rear here, behind these units, is where the railroad bed was. There's a retaining wall, that's this gray line here. And then there's a note, "old railroad bed to be maintained in clear condition. Seed all disturbed areas behind wall with meadow mix as specified."
What tool is retaining?
It's just a couple of feet. It's a very small retaining wall. We did not put any obstructive landscaping in this area for the reason that we think a railroad bed should be maintained clear. But we did indicate, my client indicated to me that, once these are built, we will go to BRT, which is the owner, the budding property owner, and say, can we install some obstructive landscaping on your property in the woods, because there's, you know, fifty feet of woods here. But there was a comment that that's mostly deciduous, and the balconies of people in the BRT development might be able to see our development pretty clearly in the wintertime. And so we would commit to putting some landscaping in, you know, evergreen trees that can grow up and obstruct. Not going to put a wall of evergreen in, but you know, here and there to mitigate it. So that's the only comments I have in response to the public comments. Thank you.
Okay. Diane?
Could you show them the bathrooms on the first floor? You know, there's one thing between doing grab bars and being able to get through a hallway. You know, I don't think you can make a change in the the actual way the stairs are with the hallway and the bathroom, so.
The architect is very clear that the units can be made ADA compliant.
Can you, can you just show that, you know, close up? I'm just, you know, there's that section you got to go through, past the stairs, through where the laundry is into that bathroom, and it's got, you know, a tub. So the tub is not going to be something that somebody, you know, that's on the first floor is going to be able to get into. You know, you want to really have
Can I just interject a little bit, because I am familiar with plumbing and the issues involved with plumbing, actually. And it, based on the size of the room, for example, when we talk about a tub, well, obviously, if someone was handicapped and they wanted to change out the tub, that is something that a plumber would
Right, right, but the issue is
But the size of the room is sufficient to meet those type of needs.
It's not if you're, you know, I mean, if you have somebody who wants to buy a one that is, to have a wheelchair. There's no way of getting that turn by the bottom of the stairs going in towards the laundry and into that bathroom. It's not like it's directly from the bathroom, I mean, from the bedroom into that area. And elderly people tend to need to go right into the bathroom, not going through a lot of different areas to get into it. I'm assuming that's the main, that's the main bedroom. So that's, that's my concern. The layout just, you know, I think maybe a few need to be looked at a little bit.
But they're not ADA compliant.
Right.
So
There's no requirement that
There's no requirement that they have to be, is the point.
Right, but all the different people who are older, you know, they're fifty-five and over. You know, we don't know, tomorrow you could fall down and then you can't live there, basically. So it just doesn't make it adaptable, is basically my point. So it just makes me question how much it's really senior. If it's not ADA, now, you don't have to worry about any of that. So anyway, that's just my question.
To be clear, this is not senior housing. It is housing for older persons.
Oh, that's the name of it now?
That's the name, it's always been. Under federal law, it legalizes discrimination. It allows you to say this is only for older persons. And the requirement is that eighty percent of the units are occupied by at least one person who is fifty-five and older. We're going to have a hundred percent of the units, but it's only one person who's fifty-five and older. Again, we're not going to go down the road of deciding who's elderly at the age of fifty-five.
I wouldn't.
But all I can say is that the architect and my client have assured me that I can tell you, because he said it at the last meeting, that every single one of these units can easily be made ADA compliant if one of the buyers wishes to do so. As we're building, they decide, I don't want a bathtub, I want a shower pan, no problem, easy. In ten years, if somebody wants to convert it, all of the plumbing's in the right place, all of the wood is in the right place for the grab bars, et cetera, to make those changes later on, it's hard, obviously. But it, but there is definitely space for this to be ADA compliant.
Ms. Sudek, are you okay?
Yes, that answer good.
Ms. Antolini, are you all right? Have your questions been answered?
Actually, I'd like a clarification on the answer that I was given about the driveway placement. And I understand that the reasoning for putting, for not being against putting the driveway there is because there are many other driveways along that road with many other large building complexes, and that makes it safer?
David, the site plan, please?
I feel just the opposite. I feel that, you know, having two driveways, especially together, with people coming in and out, having to cross over the line into possibly the path of a school bus or something like that, which we know there's a lot going in and out that entrance. Plus the fact, I never got a chance to say, the driveway passes behind another residence, I believe. So is that resident aware that there's going to be a lot of traffic going right behind his house? I don't see why, I'm looking at this layout you just put up. I don't see why, I know you did a, you know, a whole site plan, it's all done now and everything, but I don't see why you can't put the driveway placed to the left, as we're looking at this layout, next to the other driveway, which is, seems to be fine, or down the middle of the property, which would be farther probably from the the traffic light at that point. I just am very against, I want to go down on record as saying I'm very against the placement of this driveway in the position it's shown because of the possibility of accidents occurring. Thank you.
So if we look at this plan and we see Unit Eight, which is here, I'm pointing to, there's a dashed line that goes through it, which is the existing driveway. And we looked at using that existing driveway, and the reality is that was serving a single-family home. But even still, was right into the middle of the queuing for the traffic light, all times of day or night. I strenuously disagree that Whittlesey has more traffic than Plum Trees. Plum Trees is one of the busiest roads in town, and the queuing for the traffic light takes it right to where that driveway was. The only option
I'd like a chance to answer once you
Would you please let Mr. Olson
Can I make a point of order here, that we stop the back and forth discussion?
Our civil engineer believed that the only option that worked as a safety matter was to terminate the driveway that came out of Plum Trees Road and remove that as a factor in the queuing. Did not think it was valid to put ten units worth of traffic right into the middle of the queue. So that's why it's on Whittlesey Road. I don't have any fears at all of putting a driveway on Whittlesey Road.
So there's no driveway going into Plum Trees at all?
There's no driveway going into Plum Trees at all. There is a new retaining wall that was put in along Plum Trees. And this is actually fairly steep on the southern side of the property, western side of the property, going down there. So we didn't think it was appropriate to build a new driveway into Plum Trees, which would still have the same queuing issues. And just to emphasize, it's not just queuing to the light. I mean, this is where people stop for that traffic light. It's all the traffic coming from the other direction as well, that they'd have to
Excuse me, Chairman, may I speak to reply to something that I think is incorrect that Mr. Olson just said? He said that, may I have permission?
Sure, go right ahead, one more time.
Thank you. I did not say that there was more traffic on Whittlesey. It's a different type of traffic. It's school buses and parents with children in the cars, and possibly even students, driving older students in high school. And there is a curve coming from the other direction, and there are two driveways. There's many, many reasons why that driveway should not come out of the side of the property. I looked at the driveway to the west of the property, it seems pretty flat, unless the and I looked at the property on the west side of the property in question, and it seems like a driveway could be put there. I'm not an engineer, so I won't press that issue. But all I'm saying is, other possibilities were not even talked about. It was just a set thing from day one of Mr. Olson speaking about this project that the driveway has to go where it is. I just think it's a bad idea. Thank you so much.
Madam Chairman, may I just make one comment in regards to what was just stated for the record? Prior to the initiation of this application, the town of Bethel, who various departments spent months working with the property owner, coming up with solutions and ideas for the structures on the property, and in particular, the driveway, the driveway in particular. And that is after meeting with fire marshal, with, at the time, the town engineer, myself, and being familiar with that intersection and the traffic associated with it. So there was more to it than just a civil engineer putting a driveway on a plan, saying that that is where they would like it to go.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
And I'll make one additional comment.
Please.
Every single vehicle that travels on Whittlesey Drive, whether it's entering Whittlesey or exiting Whittlesey, also travels on Plum Trees. And Plum Trees also has all the traffic that continues through on Plum Trees and switches over to Walnut Hill Road. So there's less traffic on Whittlesey Drive, and the traffic that is there is identical to the traffic that's on Plum Trees.
Yes. Thank you. Thank you very much. Okay, Commission members. Bob, still Legner, do you have any questions?
No, no questions, I think it's a good plan.
Thank you. Doug, Cooney?
No questions, I agree with Mr. Legner, we move the, move things along.
Thank you. Penny Kessler?
Yes, I have two questions. Can you clarify a question that was brought up about the police report? The question was, were the police informed that this is a fifty-five plus complex?
I think Seth needs to answer.
I would, I would tell you, I don't recall if they were or they were not. They understood that it was an affordable housing project containing ten homes. And most of their reviews are based on that information, the actual site plan itself. There is no discrimination shown, whether it is fifty-five or older or market rate.
All right, thank you.
If I can just add one comment to that, one piece of advice that I always, sometimes when I represent them, talking about fifty-five and older housing for older persons, is that you should analyze it as if the restrictions are not there.
Right.
Because if, for some reason, the restrictions fail and it becomes a regular community, regular meaning no restriction, you know, you have to analyze the traffic in that way. So there's no special treatment given to it because it's fifty-five and older.
Understood, thank you. Next question. You, did you said that the rail bed, you wanted to leave untouched? How come?
For the historic nature of it. I don't know what's going to come in the future, but there's a gorgeous railroad bridge right across the street, that's part of that railroad way, where it goes downtown, it could turn into a walking trail or something over the years. So it doesn't make sense to us to put a bunch of trees in the way. Just leave it as it is.
Is that walkable at this point?
On our property, it is, but there are other trees that have grown up elsewhere. And I think there's some buildings that have been built in the path, further down, closer to the town.
All right, thank you. Not to beat a dead horse, can we go back to the bathroom access question? I understand it's not ADA compliant. I get it, you clarified that at the last meeting.
Just to be clear, it's not required to be ADA compliant. There is no requirement
No, I understand, I get it. I'm just doing it completely. For some, considering that it is fifty-five plus, that's the intended target, can we just take another quick look at the access to the bathrooms? I just, I just want to see, because if it could, if the bathrooms could be made ADA compliant with grab bars and things like that, that would assume that there is access into the bathroom, which would lead me to think that it would include access in a wheelchair into the bathroom, space-wise. Is that, is that the case?
I've been assured that
And wheelchair get in there?
I have been assured that it is accessible to wheelchair.
Excellent.
It is not ADA compliant.
I get the ADA
But it can be made ADA compliant with relative ease as it's being constructed.
I totally get it, I was just looking at space-wise.
Yeah, if we have a buyer that wants that, then we'll do it.
Okay, but the, but the room access is accessible. Okay, I'm done. Okay, I'm done. Thank you.
Mr. Johnson?
Uh, I have more questions. Think it's a good plan.
I also have no questions. I, I've looked it over and studied and I, 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 I think it's a very good plan. So uh, in that case, I think it's, we're going to close this hearing. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, criminal notice.
Yep.
Yeah.
Yes, we are.
For record, I know we're talking in the chair here.
And
Oh, yes, I'll get it.
Next item on the agenda is to open the public hearing for Mr. Tim Draper.
And I will be recusing myself.
Mr. Chairman, I'll be recusing myself also.
Mr. Chairman, I will also be recusing myself.
You want the time? Do you like it? Yes. We might, we might come over there. It's okay.
Is there something we said that nobody showed up to?
You're on.
No, this has happened many times, believe me. Uh, can I, I'll just read the legal notice. To appear September first and September eighth, two thousand twenty-three, public notice. The Bethel Planning and Zoning Commission, the holding of a hearing on September twelfth, two thousand twenty-three at seven P M. in Congress Room D of the Municipal Center One School Street, Bethel, Connecticut, to hear the following. Tim Drake for property located at forty-two Nashville Road for an affordable housing application under section E thirty-G of the Connecticut State Statute. The proposal consists of three additional units for a total of five units. The project can be found in the assessors' record as map thirty-one, block thirty-nine, and lot zero five ones. Materials can be viewed on the town website. The public may send comments via regular mail and email to landviews@bethelconnecticutct.gov. Parking for hearing is located to the rear of the building. Ken Stevens, Jim.
What we said?
We're set. You're on.
Okay. The director, whoever's going to speak. Bone Wolf, P C, on behalf of the applicant. And I think that we're expecting our engineer, Steve Trinkus, to call in from upstate where he's at a meeting. He said he would try to join us, so if he calls in, I'll get interrupted. Uh, before, do you want to say something?
Yes, I start. Okay. Tim Draper, forty-eight Ampadie's Lane West. I'm the applicant for forty-two Nashville Road. I'm going to read a statement. It's going to take a few minutes. Okay, I'll start with this request that any members of this commission that are left that were present during the March eighth, two thousand twenty-two planning and zoning meeting, in which a hot mic was left on and the planning administrator disparaged me and my family and commended themselves, should it recuse themselves. These comments were made during a live public hearing on Zoom, of which I had no application, and was heard by the public and my family. The unedited version that was finally made public after the town first published an illegal edited version on the town website. I'll reiterate, an illegal edited version was presented to the town containing some very unflattering comments about me and my family, and that was made by one. But other comments were made as well, unflattering as well, by others on the commission. It is very clear what was said and who said them. So it would be most professional, recuse yourselves at this time. This application is in front of you. It's straightforward and uncomplicated. Was submitted on June twenty-seventh, two thousand twenty-three and accepted at the July eleventh meeting seventy-eight days ago, seventy-eight. Our application was submitted to S L R for review by the Land Use Commission at taxpayers' expense on July eighteenth per First Electman's Office since there is a conflict of interest with the Town Land Use Department. It took from July eleventh, planning and zoning meeting till Friday, September eighth, this past Friday, at about three P M. to receive comments from S L R. That's sixty-one days to receive the comments. Sixty-one days. Leaving exactly two business days. I want to reiterate again, two. To review and respond before this public hearing. This after calling and emailing the Land Use Department asking for those and any other comments multiple times. Sixty-one days. Also, my engineer of this project just received a letter from the Bethel Health Department on Friday, September eighth, dated September sixth, four days before the public hearing, stating payment of a hundred and seventy-five dollars is required prior to the review. Four days. A check was delivered yesterday morning by myself. Again, they had sixty-four days. So let me be clear, July eleventh, two thousand twenty-three to today, September twelfth, two thousand twenty-three is sixty-four days. One day statutally obligated to open a public hearing. One day. And we get comments, two business days to respond? In all fairness, we did get Bethel Utility comments fifteen days ago, the Police Department comments fourteen days ago, and Fire Marshal comments about twenty-three days ago. Still almost fifty days since this application was accepted. This is not the first time this has happened. In fact, it seems to be the normal with all of my applications. A document dumped two days before a public hearing, leaving us with little time to respond, not uncommon for my applications. Now I'm curious for a few things. One. Are all applicants submitted to S L R for review at a cost to the taxpayers? If not, how do they determine which ones are submitted? Or am I special? Two. When was this sent to S L R for review? The First Electman's Office requested this on July eighteenth, two thousand twenty-three, and it took fifty-seven days to review this. It's almost two months. Two months. And why return us two business days to review and respond? Is that harassment or work ethic? I don't know. I'm a Bethel taxpayer. Either way, this is unacceptable. The comments made by S L R are confusing, to say the least. First off, fourteen of the twenty-three comments say I should quote. Now let me explain. Now let me first explain the dictionary definition of should. It's used to say or suggest that something is proper, reasonable, or the best thing to do. So out of, out of their twenty-three comments, twenty-three of a very basic site plan, does this mean that their fourteen comments indicate we should? Does this mean they are required by law or just that are suggestions? I don't know, because there is a clear difference between what they think we should do and what is required by law to do. That's pretty important to know as a builder developer. Four. After reviewing S L R comments with my engineer, six of the comments had nothing to do with engineering whatsoever. Six comments that the taxpayers of Bethel paid for were, were pertaining to building, not engineering, meaning that one, they do not apply this application review with the land use at all. Two, S L R has no right to delve into building issues, which wastes my time, the commission's time, and the taxpayers' money. Three, who reviews it? Who reviews the invoices for work done by S L R? One, is it apparent that they perform work outside of the scope was what, of what was requested nor required? This is that it costs to the taxpayers and someone should be held accountable and it should be monitored. No, actually, it should be required to be monitored. Besides being outside of the scope of what was requested, it is unethical to perform work not required and charging the taxpayers of Bethel unless it was required by the Land Use Department, and that would be outside of their jurisdiction. And lastly, my comments are, my applications have always been roadblocked by this commission, previous commissions, and the Bethel Land Use Department. Last-minute reviews are abnormal for us. Every application we have submitted has been met with difficulty, yet in the end, every application we have submitted has been approved ultimately because they are fair and normal applications. They just took a long time due to the roadblocks this commission has put in front of us. Lastly, again, I was once told by a commission member and the head of the Bethel Land Use Department that all applicants are treated consistently. Well, I wholeheartedly strongly disagree with that statement for the many reasons that I have just stated. But I will say this, this is the last thing I'm going to say. They are truly consistent in how they are inconsistent, how they treat this applicant. Tim Draper.
Thank you. Um, Chairman, members of the commission, the application is of, for the construction essentially of a three-family house on a site. If you've been by Nashville Road, you can see where it is. It's pretty apparent. It's been cleared to, connects to a two-family house that will be part of the affordable housing plan, but it's not scheduled for any modifications at this point. On the phone somewhere, I'm not sure how it's coming in here, is Steve Trinkus. Are you there, Steve?
Uh, yes, I am.
Steve Trinkus, our civil engineer. I'm going to turn this over to him for a few minutes to comment on the engineering and the engineering response and the sir reply back to the consultants. Go ahead, Steve.
Good evening, commission. Uh, Steve Trinkus, for the record, I'm a licensed professional engineer with an office in Southbury, Connecticut. I happen to have a conflict tonight, uh, so I'm, I'm calling in. Um, the application is relatively uh, simple as Tim uh, has stated. It's a new three-unit building set into the existing cut-ledged slope. Some will be uh, cut out a little more. Uh, garages are all on the ba-, uh, the lowest level facing uh, Nashville Road. And then there'll be storage on the garage level and then there'll be two floors above it. Um, the site will be served by sewer, water, and gas uh, from Nashville Road. Um, the Public Utilities Department had some minor comments about a water meter, a, a shut-off valve, and a uh, cleanout, I believe, on the sanitary line, all of which were added to the revised plans, which were emailed uh, to the Land Use Department uh, this afternoon. Um, the uh, S L R plans I responded to, um, uh, Todd had asked for an additional test pole on the northern system, which will be happy to do at the time of construction. The test that we dug, um, it was, while there was surface, you know, material ledges that Tim had removed from the bank, um, you know, we went down to a very deep depth, depth, all in beautiful bankland sand and gravel materials. Um, this area where the cul-de-sac system is proposed is um, where parking was on this site. It was level. It was not bedrock. The bedrock area actually was from about the existing Bilco doors of the existing house kind of running in a line more or less uh, due south. Um, and that was the extent of the ledge. So ledge was not present out in this area. Um, the catchbasins all have two-foot sumps. S L R asked for four-foot ones and hooded outlets, which are unnecessary, in my professional opinion, as it's a limited drainage area. Uh, furthermore, uh, most people are not using sand during winter de-icing uh, systems at all. They're using the chloride. Um, and for the two-foot some, uh, for the two catchbasins here, it's more than adequate uh, for the small drainage area. Uh, S L R had also asked for spot elevations in the driveway. Um, they're not necessary because all of the garages are at elevation four fifty-one. The two catchbasins rims are at four fifty, which is a foot lower. And we showed a high point roughly in the center of the driveway towards Nashville Road, uh, which is four fifty and a half. So it's clear that the water is going to drain to the catchbasins. Um, it is not mandated to have spot elevations on the plan. Uh, I put them on when it's warranted. In this particular case, um, it is not. Uh, there was a question as to how the area behind the units will be um, filled with dirt. Um, it will be filled with dirt as we build the foundation wall. The wall goes up in eight-foot section and we will be backfilling it as we go. And after the second one, likely putting, you know, extra material up there. So when we do the final top of the concrete wall in the rear, we'll already have uh, the material there. So as I, you know, did get the staff comments, you know, last Friday, um, and I was able to review them this morning, uh, revise the plans, provide the response, et cetera. Um, there was also a, a slight discrepancy in the cul-de-sac system where the bottom was shown at elevation four forty-five and it showed a twelve-inch stone. Uh, it was a twelve-inch stone, a hydrologic model, but only six inches on the cross-section. So I removed the twelve inches of stone and the model made it six, so that conforms. And it doesn't change the runoff characteristics. All of the water here will infiltrate because the sand and gravel was uh, extremely permeable. Um, and that really, uh, we also put a um, state pay bills around the existing catch basin on Nashville Road. Um, there's no need to put them on the two proposed basins because when those basins are installed, the tops are sitting at least a foot above the uh, grade of the site, the subgrade. And water simply can't get into the catch basin grades because they're higher than the active surface. And once the bank run gravel or cruston is brought in for paving, it's put in and then it's paved. And then, you know, you have no bare soil. Um, so that, that's a quick overview of it. And again, you know, you know, I did, you know, everything I could to get the plant out back in today.
Before we continue, is there, are there plans that can be put up?
Sure are.
So that we, it, it was, now we're these are here?
They were filed like-
No, I understand. I'm just asking if they can be put up.
I assume we can, but-
Onto the zone. Bye.
Yes, I wish I could. We have the plans. You all have sent me.
So is this, is this the one we have here?
Yeah.
Is this the latest one?
Yes, yes, that's the latest set of plans.
Do you want this? I'm sorry, I should have looked earlier. I'm sorry.
The, uh, Mr. Trinkus, are you finished?
Uh, yes, I am. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Marcus. I can't. Uh, the uh, is, I'm not going to repeat obviously what Stephen said. The engineering for the site is actually relatively simple, keeping in mind that it's basically a three-family house in a developed neighborhood with all the city services of sewer, water, the light. Uh, we've received a copy just this afternoon or this evening, actually, of Laura Vaseel's uh, report. And uh, Steve has not been seeing yet, so I'm going to refer it to our project engineer. But uh, Laura seems to be focused a little bit in this, a lot in this report on uh, the uh, possibility or the treatment of radon gases in the ground. And she quotes uh, Department of Public Health radon program, and then she points out a first paragraph of her letter midway down, is this project is for a three-family dwelling, appendix F would not apply. So appendix F, she spends a lot of time talking about what appendix F does, which is enlightening. Uh, it's, I think, important that the commission understands it. But quite honestly, most of the letter doesn't apply because it is a three-family house and the appendix doesn't apply to it. She then uh, talks about uh, having enclosed garbage, screened-in garbage enclosures. And she, I've seen a lot of her reports. She spends a lot of time on garbage enclosures. And actually, the town of Bethel ought to, in my mind, actually adopt an ordinance on this because there is no ordinance in Bethel dealing with garbage enclosures, but the health department is always commenting on them. But here, she seems to imply that the existing two-family house, house is a health hazard because they store their garbage in garbage cans that are not in a enclosure. We'll take a look at that to see if there have been problems at the, at that house that have been reported to the health department. But it, I just, I, I, a little bit of lost the, by the- I just, I, a little bit of lost, by the stand, where Laura's going, other than our plan is that the new units that we're constructing will have garages, and we expect that most of the people living there will actually do what I do, we keep their garbage cans in the garage and we'll put them out on a service day.
These are, Tim Draper again, for the record, these are not condos, these are apartments. Okay, so they're not independently owned, so the garbage cans will be provided by the landlord and they will be stored in the garages.
Yeah, I think that should address Laura's concerns, hopefully. Yeah, she talks about mosquito control, which is kind of interesting, because if you look at the comments from SLR, a lot of it has to do with the fact that, that there's, the site is a little bit crowded with impervious structures, impervious surfaces and building structures. So again, a little bit of loss as to why there's a concern that mosquitoes will be at this site, because there really is no area on the site to pond water. But again, we'll try to address that again through Steve Trinkus, once he's had a chance to do it. But other than that, I mean, the report from the health department does not raise any issues that we feel need to be addressed at this time. It's interesting that, again, this commission knows, because of all the towns in the area, I think Bethel has more experience with eight dash thirty G than most towns. And the issue under eight dash thirty G is other public health or safety issues raised by the plan, which cannot be, which are not addressed or cannot be addressed by reasonable conditions of approval or reasonable modifications to the plan, in which override the state mandate to create 10% affordable housing in every town and city in the state of Connecticut. So focusing on that and looking at both reports that are in front of the commission, we can find nothing that really addresses the statutory concerns. But then again, we haven't heard from the commission and we haven't heard from the public, so at this point, we'll stand by, if there are issues, we'll try to address them. But you have anything else? Oh yeah, recently we've gotten a report from the fire marshal on access to the rear of the property in the event that the fire department needs to stage equipment behind the buildings. And it's a reasonable request, and actually it does have to do with health and safety. And we're going to address that with a, basically, a landscaped steps. So that the fire department will be able literally to go up a reasonable set of landscaped steps, blocks, whatever you want to call it, right up to the back of the property, it can access it without trying to scale or put ladders up against retaining walls. The answer is to the issue that we'll put steps in. So that is one thing that we will address, and that'll be shown on the plan.
Again, Tim Draper, the applicant, we received that comment today at 3:55 PM.
So we're just working on it.
I was just looking for.
We don't have it, so.
3:55 PM, four hours ago.
I always like to stay a little bit ahead of you guys, if I can. It's not easy. But no, that's, as I say, where we have heard comments, we have addressed them, and where they're brand new, we'll still continue to address them. But at this point, forget it. For building a three family house, it'll qualify under affordable housing. It'll be it, it'll be in harmony with the type of structures that exist along Nashville Road. And it will, again, I think, be in line with the state mandate to provide better housing in the state entirely. And as I said, I think, we'll, I always comment, this commission, you guys do your fair share. And, and I've always appreciated that. To any extent, as Tim said in his introductory comments, where the commission or where the reviewers have asked for changes to projects that needed to be adopted, he's done that, and we'll do that here too. And we'll stand by for questions.
Thank you. This time I'd like to open the question to the public, if anybody has a question or a comment, please come forward, state your name and address, address your comments to the commission, and when all comments have been made, the applicant or the commission will answer your questions.
My name is Bob Sutton, I live at 46 Nashville Road. I'm a third generation to own the house at 46 Nashville Road. I have Mr. Draper on one side, I have Mr. Oldham, a fireman from Westport that owns 48, 50, and the woods in back of my place. Up until May 1st.
Could you come over here so those on the.
No problem.
Thank you.
Up until May 1st, the only knowledge I had of Mr. Draper was what I would read in the News Times. I met him on the 1st, me and his son were clearing brush and trees off of the property, and I asked him what he was doing. And he said, I'm going to put a house up and back. And I thought, you have enough room to put a house up and back? So on Tuesday, I went down to the land office and talked with Macombe. I asked him two questions, one, does he have enough land to build on? The answer was, we do not think so. And two, does he have a permit to build? The answer was no. He started using machines and doing his work. Sometimes it was early, such as on May the 6th, he started work at 7:15 in the morning, which was a Saturday. And that was the day that Charles got to be kicked, so a lot of people were up. He also started work various times before eight o'clock, and I was informed that work was not supposed to start until at least eight o'clock. I asked the town to come up and look and see what he was doing, and Mr. Macombe did come up. At 3:30 on the 11th, he showed up. On the 12th, Mr. Macombe showed up twice with a police officer for a cease and desist order. Mr. Draper wasn't around until 12:05, five minutes after the town offices closed. He got served with a cease and desist order on the 15th, but he's still working and he finished his work on the 16th, 12:20. Although he did use it from other times to remove the rocks and from there. I know, various times in June, he did start work, was usually just taking the equipment and removing the rocks and stuff off of his property. Now, I kept asking for two weeks, does he have enough land to build on? And the answer kept going, we do not think so. And does he have a permit? It was no, that's why they gave him the cease and desist order. And the last machine was removed on the 20th of July. And there was supposed to be a meeting on the 27th of July that got canceled because I believe they said that Mr. Marcus was not available at the time. I've lived on the town all my life. I've seen the traffic back up from the food bag traffic light right up to the condos in 66. From times that people getting out of work. I just don't see where there's enough property that he can build a three unit house. There's no, there's no land to do anything with, other than sit in the house, to tell you the truth. And a lot of these people here that have come up to hell are afraid that what's happening here is going to happen when Mr. Oldham or Oldham wants to quote unquote do his drilling or building on the woods in back of the house. That I, I can't remember how far up he owns. He owns quite a distance. His land borders the Cecil Street condos of where Ray Groove, we used to live. And I never, I never was against it, all I wanted was those two questions asked. Does he have enough land to build on? And does he have the permit? And the answer to the first question was, we don't think so, and the answer to the second one was no. So that's what I guess.
Thank you very much. Anyone else have a comment or a question for the applicant?
My name is Joseph Campbell, I own the property.
My address?
What? My address, I'm not living there right now, I live on Nine Long Metal Lane. My daughter lives on 49 Nashville Road. I used to own that property, I sold it to, I own a house that's under construction on 47 Nashville. That's, that's pretty obvious of, of his property that he wants to develop, okay? Many years ago, I tried to develop that property on Nashville Road, that it goes all the way down to Overlook Parks entrance, okay? I put my application and I had a lot of people that didn't, didn't think that I was entitled to, I have enough road funding, I have enough property, they, they come up with, and I spent a lot of money and a lot of time because they thought I, um, they said, well, I'm going to do the drainage in front of, of Nashville Road there. And I was denied because they said, well, I made up an engineer to pipe the book pretty simply. And they said, well, this application is not correct. We want the pipe to go in a different direction. I said, what, it doesn't go uphill? I says, it goes down here. And that's what I did, so I had to make up another map that showed it differently, a little bit different. That was denied.
With all due respect, you keep your comments to the applicants.
Okay, yeah, all right. I, I was, I, I was, I was not against his application. But if his application is approved, what about me that I own that property twice, twice, three times as much property across the street than he owns? And there's physically enough land to put six building lots across the street. Okay, now, I, I tried to, to get it to make the last two families piece of property, and I was denied. Okay. I'm a plumbing contractor and an excavation contractor, and what they did to me was, well, the commission at the time said that I was denied. But if he's approved for his application, why not, why don't that's, that whole street become two family instead of single family? Then, 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 then him is, is, is special, and I'm not special. You know, so, I mean, if, if he's approved, why, why not the people that have pieces of property large enough and big enough to, to do what he has, he's really pushing the old level with size and drainage and, and, and I was shocked that he was digging out rock for weeks and weeks and weeks, my daughter says, what's going on down here? And, um, you know, I think that, um,
Mr. Draper, could you give the app the same.
I was, I was gonna, well, my applicant, application was, I wanted to put sidewalks on my side of the street. So my daughter, my young granddaughter won't get run over by a car, but I was denied. And, you know, I was always.
Please keep your comments to.
Yeah, okay, so what, what approved? If he's, he's approved, what was it leave, what means me with my, my property? That's all I have to say.
Thank you. Anyone else in the room here to speak?
Yes. From Gail Parcheski Schultz, 54 Nashville Road. It was brought to our attention all digging that was going on. And I called, there's no permit. Well, I raised a little bit of ruckus, I've taken pictures, lots of that everyone has, referring to the town. And there's an injustice here. This gentleman has infringed on Mr. Sutton's property. He has torn down his, Mr. Sutton's stone wall. He's got tape on to Mr. Sutton's property. There's just, um, I'm choosing my words. There are some people who like to run over others. I'm sorry, that's not how I was raised, that's not how I live at all. And I'm not in favor of this at all. Nashville Road is abused because we are the through road to get down south because of the big trucks. I've been in my home since 73. That's a long time. It was a no through traffic road initially, for many years, actually. Well, we're just creating more traffic. There's speed, I've spoken to the police. Most recently also again. I don't feel that we need more housing that is going to create more traffic. I can't get out of my driveway, and neither can my neighbors during traffic time. I avoid from about 4:30 on until commuters are by. You can't get out of my driveway, and I am three houses from the condo, and they're way down. So I have the concern about Mr. Sutton's property and the damage that was done, that I understand is illegal to take down anyone stone wall other than your own. That's why I ended up here and doing a lot of other things. Here and doing a lot of other things. So thank you.
Anybody else in the room have comment or question?
Up there?
You please.
Uh, we need your name and address.
My name is Mary Oldmieri.
So that they can see you from.
I live on a management lower extension number ten. And I just have some questions. I came tonight because I was concerned. Um, I drive down Nashville Road all the time. I went by one day and there was this great big hole. It was like, my goodness, where did that come from? Um, it's worse looking now as the months have gone on. I understand Mister Draper's dilemma that it's taking a long time. But my question is, was it legal? Does he have a permit? And does he have enough land? I'm listening to Mister Sutton here tonight and. I'm wondering, is his property being encroached? I, I think there's morality here that we need to deal with. Um. Housing, Bethel will always need housing, but it needs to be appropriate and it needs to be in the right place. And Mister Draper has built some things that have really helped our town. But it needs to be the right thing. It doesn't need to be on somebody else's property. So can the, can the commission tell me? Is it legal? Does he have a permit?
He's here tonight presenting his application for a building permit.
For a permit, right? I'm trying to learn, that's why I'm asking. So he's here to get a permit.
Correct, a building permit, yes.
So you can excavate?
I think if you heard a comment earlier, there was a, a cease and desist.
I'm, I'm just trying to understand it. It's new to me. And I don't know what that means.
He was, I believe, and I didn't see it. Mister Marcus can probably interpret for me. Um, there was an order issued by the town to cease and desist the work he was doing on the property until such time as he had. Submitted his application and been approved or denied.
So. What does that mean? That means you did it anyway.
Address your questions.
Do you? I'm sorry. I thought you said to Mister Marcus.
He'll address it to him. I'll try to answer.
He'll answer for you.
Um, it's your statements, yes. What does that mean?
He was sent an order by the town. Which told him to stop his activity on the property until he was even hanging before the commission. Submitted his application and was had either approved or denied.
Okay, and that didn't happen?
I'm not aware of whether it happened or not because I've.
I, I'm really just trying to understand both sides of this. Um, I, I'm feeling very, very sad. Because I'm watching Mister Sutton and I think his arguments are legitimate. And I'm watching Mister Draper sit there laughing and, and there's something wrong here. I'm sorry, there's something wrong. I'm trying to understand. Can we all work together? So.
May I please?
Yes.
Uh, you ask the question, you ask us. And then when you sit down, then his attorney and Mister Higginson will answer that, will try to answer that question.
Okay, fine.
And so you will be, so you will understand everything that's going on.
Okay.
And if you don't, then you let us know and we'll make sure you do understand.
Okay, good. Thank you, thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else in the room? Do we have anybody on Zoom who would like to ask a question from the public? David, do you have any hands raised? I don't see any.
Not seeing any hand. I'm seeing Paula Antolini, Mister Chairman.
Go ahead, please.
Uh, good evening, Paula Antolini, nineteen Jacobs Lane. Um, what is the normal timeframe? Is there is one? For, from the time an applicant puts in an application to when you give him or her the okay. To start building, you know, you approve the application. Uh, and. Is it the same all different times of year? Because I would assume a builder has. A schedule to meet before the snow falls. And if there's any delays in applications. Um, that might affect his building schedule. So can you um, let me know what that's all about? And also. I, I think I read in the documents. Um, but I believe it was one document from the police. Commenting on a lot of different properties, including Mister Draper's. And I believe there might be an error where it says regarding this property, um, that it's on an empty lot. And the applicant uh, states that there's one house on that lot. Um, I'd also like to know what the parameters are. Uh, if they're listed anywhere for how large of a house or houses can be built on a certain amount of acreage. And if there's any limit on how many people can live in those homes. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else on Zoom have a question or a comment? Permission?
Yeah. Mister Marcus.
Oh, yes, thank you. I give for the record. Bill Marcus on behalf of the public. I'm gonna start for a second with the question on the cease and desist order. On May eleventh. The town of Bethel issued a cease and desist order. Um. And it says, I'm, I'm not gonna read the whole thing, but I'll quote from it. You're hereby ordered directed to cease and desist the subject activities. Uh. Which are violations, in violation of regulations. That real property located at the subject address, which is forty two Nashville Road uh, in Bethel. And. The issuance of the cease and desist order is based on camera photographs. Commended to the land use department. In observation by the land use department staff. Of your activity on the subject property. The staff observed the use of an excavator with hydraulic breaker attachment. And employees use of an excavator with a bucket attachment to remove, which plays ledge and rock materials. To make substantial changes to the existing grade. So that was the order to cease and desist. And in fact. There's been no activity on the site since that order was issued. So to the extent, uh, it was issued, it was complied. However. Uh, the applicant, the property owner applicant this evening. Has appealed that order and uh. The appeal that we filed with the zoning board of appeals, we alleged that. We submit that the allegations of a violation of section six, four, C eight. Of the zoning regulations. Uh, does not apply. Where there's been less than a thousand cubic yards of material uh, removed from the site. Uh, and uh. The, the, that activity is allowed by section six point four point C seven of the Bethel zoning regs. Uh, we. Indicate that the property is being landscaped. Which is, uh, and that the landscaping is allowed without permits. And really, the only permit you need is to. Remove a certain volume of material from the site. That is the bone of contention uh, at this point. Between the Assistant Zoning Enforcement Officer's order and the uh. The. Position of the property owner. And the order alleged, excuse me, the cease and desist. Order alleged that protective fencing should have been uh, established. In accordance with section six, four, D six of the regulations for pedestrians and vehicles. Uh, on Nashville Road where the work was being done. And again, our position is that's only required. If you're working in Nashville Road and that all the work that was done on the property was done on the site. So that's the cease and desist in a nutshell. Uh, at this point, and quite honestly, it's moot. Uh, because the applicant is here this evening seeking a permit to construct a three family house on the site. The three family house will be, will be situated as shown on the filed plans. In an area that has been landscaped, i.e. Ledge has been removed and overburdened and removed to allow the construction of the residence. So at this point, to discuss the cease and desist particularly in front of this commission. Really doesn't make a lot of sense. And we have a hearing next week scheduled before the zoning board of appeals. And quite honestly, I'm not sure that makes any sense either, but we're talking to town council. On whether that needs to go forward at this point. At this point, what really needs to happen is that the commission. Has to address the application. And determine whether a permit. Idea site plan can be issued or approved. Uh. And that has to focus on some of the issues that Steve Trinkett raised in his engineering report. And the questions raised by the town review engineer, the consulting engineer. And at some point, if the two of them can agree on modifications to the plan. And those modifications. Address any public health or safety issues. And quite honestly, in the review report from, from S L R. Some of the comments have nothing to do with public health and safety. It has to do with. Uh, a preference as to how one engineer might design and another engineer might not. But that's not unique to this application. That happens all the time. And eventually, uh, is the trailer testified to earlier, uh, where. Criticisms or comments have been made, have been addressed and usually of the project gets approved. And it's. With conditions or with modifications that. Meet three, the responses from the town engineer. So having said that, uh, this whole idea of. The cease and desist order really shouldn't play into the decision. The other question had to do with. Safety of the roads, of Nashville Road. Uh, and there is a letter of. August twenty ninth. Uh, submitted to the commission. Uh, and it deals with a number of items of a shopping center, forty two Plum Trees Road. Uh, in forty two Nashville Road. And this uh, is a letter from Lieutenant Robert Durkin. Junior of the Bethel Police Department. And it's addressed to Chief Pugner. And it is. The purpose of reviewing the three plans before the P and Z tonight. And Lieutenant Durkin evaluated the three properties. And I'll go right down to forty two Nashville Road. He says, there's currently, this is currently a vacant lot. And the proposal is to place three condominium units with a garage under and apartment above. I do not see any issue with the sightline or roadway handling the proposal. So again, keeping in mind, and I, and I'm. Having. Riven Nashville Road regularly going in and out of Bethel, that's my route, one of them. Uh, I can agree with, with the comments by uh, the last speaker. It is a through road and it's a through road. Remarkably for very large vehicle because there's a railroad bridge. Which remarkably was never raised to a right, right height to accommodate trucks. And I went through that whole debate. I'm sure commission members remember that whole debate. But for whatever reason, better or worse, the decision was made to keep the railroad trestle at the height. Where the trucks that have to go south on Route fifty three.
You're saying fifty three?
Have to go, have to go down Nashville Road. That's, that's a fact of life. I don't agree with it and I'm not sure why it was done, but it was done. The issue, the issue though is, will three housing units in forty two Nashville Road. Significantly impact the traffic on Nashville Road? And do it in a way that will create adverse conditions to public safety? The answer to that from Lieutenant Durkin is none. So. I'll accept what he has said. And the commission, of course, have asked questions. From the chief because the letter is submitted through the chief who actually oversees traffic. In the town of Bethlehem, it's of the town roads, of not state highways. So. That's where we are on, on Nashville Road. The last issue of. Raised about. Whether this site can accommodate a three family house in addition to the existing two family house. That is the essence of what's before the commission this evening. That's the ultimate question they need to decide. We believe the applicant that is believes that. It can. And we submit that our engineers' drawings and plans. Uphold that position or endorse that position. So that's the ultimate question. Uh, and the commission knows that the site plan review under eight dash thirty G. It's for public health and safety and. That's what they're going to. Uh, but to the extent that, um. Mister Sutton. Is concerned. I think that his concerns have been addressed to the commission. It's certainly been addressed to the applicant and I think the commission will consider them in the review. And we'll go back and take another look at the plan and see if there's any, any adjustment. They can address this kind of concern that the site can't hold a three family house in addition to the two family next door. Uh, other than that, the comments that were raised by the public, you know, I can't, by the way, and I don't mean to insult Joseph Campbell, who I've known. For many, many years. Uh, but quite honestly, uh, Joe, your, your comments are. Why was I treated differently years ago? And I'll tell you why. Because years ago, the act under eight dash thirty G didn't exist and the criteria were a lot different. But at this point, I have to agree with some of the conclusions made by the chair. That the comments you have about your property really don't apply to forty two directly. And uh, to the extent that they don't, I'm not sure there's much we can do about it in this proposal. But uh, it, it rests assured that regulations have changed a lot. In this area of law of zoning over the years. So. That's our response unless you think I've missed something.
Yes, yes, what did I miss? Uh, I'll, I'll, I'll address that.
Okay.
Tim Draper, the applicant. Uh, a lady behind me, I, I think she was fifty two Nashville Road. Stated that we took down Mister Sutton's wall around his property. If somebody can show me proof of that.
Pictures.
Let Mister, let Mister Draper.
If somebody can show me pictures of the wall that was taken down because the wall is still there. All the plants on his side of the wall are still there. That is a. Fact. Period. So somebody basically just called me a liar. Is the way I see it. So if we all want to take a, a sidewalk out there, we can. We can do a spontaneous one like we did four years ago on my application on Taylor Avenue.
I remember that.
A spontaneous sidewalk. That probably never happened before. We'll bring flashlights. But I, I, this is, that's, that's just nonsense.
I get it, Mister Draper.
Thank you. And again, I didn't address that issue of the wall only because if. Mister Sutton's wall was removed, we are responsible for replacing it. But a lot of problems with stone walls are, nobody is quite sure which property they are until you do an accurate survey.
Which we did.
And we've done the survey and we're comfortable that the wall is still there. It was, that Mister Sutton's wall was not touched. But if he's got any indication, he got any evidence that they were wrong. We'll address it because he, his concern is not wrong. His facts may not be correct. We'll deal with it.
I never said the wall had come down. No. Couldn't say that. I.
Thank you.
I, I do not know. I do not go on Mister Draper's property. And I expect him to follow the same thing for me. I do not want him. I do not want him or any family member with lawn service crew or any person, company, or anybody that is working directly or indirectly park on my property or to cut across. I'm not giving permission. I have four signs up now. Three that say no trespassing and one that says private property, no trespassing. And I expect that. Now, in the past, I will tell you this. I have never stopped anybody from cutting across a property because a lot of kids would go from Nashville Road into the Chestnut Street. Say that little dip that they had to go through on Chestnut Street. But because of safety concerns, I don't want anybody on my property unless I invite them.
Thank you very much.
Any other questions?
Maybe I'm right, getting it right. When I thought that National Road was, when I was told that when I built my house, it's a single family only, end of story. Now saying that anybody that wants to build on National Road, they can make as many as three, six, five, five, whatever. But I was told that I had to stay with the rules of the law, the setbacks and everything with single family. Okay, now, um, that is changed now. Let me get this right. Is it, is it only for certain people or for, for, um, let me hear this.
I believe. I will consult with you afterwards. I think I need to take.
No, but I'm saying.
Sorry. He's talking eight thirty G. That is totally different from what is there now.
I don't know what eight thirty G.
It's an affordable housing act for the state of Connecticut.
Okay. So if I, if I have a house there now, I can.
Well, we'll talk about that another time.
Okay.
Thank you, sir.
Any other questions from the public? Any questions from the commissioners on the Zoom call?
I'm recusing.
I have a question. You, you quoted the, uh, Health Department report saying that garbage cans couldn't be used or they have to be used and, and, and enclosed in the garage. And you said if you can close the new ones in the garages, and the old ones in the shed, does that meet her requirement? Because it's exactly what they're doing out of Copper Square with hundreds of units. Thank you. That's it, Ken.
Thank you, Bob.
Yeah, I just want to follow up with something that Mr. Draper said. It's about the Health Department's, um, comments. And very correctly, Mr. Draper notes that, um, the Health Department says as this project is for a three family dwelling, appendix F would not apply. That's not the full stop, however, because the report continues. However, we, Department of Public Health, would refer you to the national consensus standard for soil gas control systems in new construction, multifamily, school, commercial, and mixed use buildings. This is all about radon. And it's linked within the document and suggest that radon mitigation, preparation, construction be incorporated into the building design. So I guess my question is, is that something that the applicant is going to be doing? Considering that it is a suggestion by the Health Department?
The answer is, yes, for the record, no, Marcus, that it doesn't apply to this type of construction. But it's an idea that if, again, if the town of Bethel wants to do this townwide, you can't cherry pick this application, that application, saying, of these, we'd like to do a different standard. It's not a bad idea. Anything that improves and, and, and addresses radon in the ground. But i- in reality, it should be townwide. They should make that to anybody when you pull a building permit to remodel uh, that you try to bring your house up to this new standard. But first you got to establish the standard. It doesn't exist. It is merely a suggestion. So, and I'm telling you, this really, uh, came into play. I remember in, in the town of Reading years ago, when the, there was a, a, a really good idea that given the fact that there was a volunteer fire department and water supply was always a problem in fighting fires. And the success of fighting fires was, was not great, even though everybody tried hard. The suggestion was that new houses should all have suppression systems. And you know what? That was terrific, except it was very costly. And it never really passed, but the town, the, the concern, the concern there was you couldn't say to the first person to come up with a subdivision that we want all of your new houses to have suppression system where nobody else is required to. So the answer is, these are good ideas. And I'm not opposed to Laura's idea that going after radon, uh, more aggressively is good. But you're not going to do it on this application. Uh, that's not the place to do it. The place to do it is to adopt the standard this townwide. And she, her problem here is she, she picks and chooses. And it, it, it's to her credit that she's investigating this stuff. But she really has to, what she's doing is the opposite of what eight dash thirty G is all about. It's affordable housing. And the idea, if you read the state statute, is you can't treat eight dash thirty G in a discriminatory way that makes it less affordable or less desirable. And I will tell you the case that was handed down by now retired Connecticut Justice Dennis Everly in the, against the town of Brookfield years ago, where the zoning commission approved affordable housing for the application. But they put on it eight conditions that made it impossible to build, absolutely impossible. And the court threw out every one of the conditions. Because there are great conditions. They wanted the applicant to supply fire water at the site in Brookfield, which was not on public water, that was greater than the water that was available in the fire hydrants on Main Street in Danbury. We actually do the comparison. And it was twice the volume of water in the Danbury Fire Hydrants that had to be out in a rural section of Brookfield. It's great, but crazy. So that, that's the type of thing that this may be a great idea. But I wouldn't even give it much a time and thought here because it cannot apply to the single application. It has to be townwide.
So in other words, the applicant is not going to take up the suggestion?
No. Tim Draper, the applicant. To start off with, radon isn't a purview of the building department. Not the health department, again, another department not staying in their own lane. Period. Okay, Connecticut State Building Code says on new construction, you have to put pipes in the slab for future radon testing.
And mitigation.
And mitigation if warranted. So you have to put the pipes in the slab. That's the code. That's going to get done. But that's all we're going to do until it's tested. If it's tested, then a mitigation system goes in. But that is on your building, not planning and zoning, not health. Not engineering, it's building.
That is great. So to, the answer is, we're not going to do what she's suggesting. We are going to do what the building requires.
Okay, thank you.
So I have. I'm trying to understand what you just said. Oh, no, no, I. Make it easy. Let me make it easy for me. Then, then you, then you can answer my questions. And I'm sure you, you've tried and I thank you. According to this, now I don't know when this appendix F of the building code was put into effect.
That's not the building code.
Well, it says, it says it right here. Appendix F of our state building, prior to the building reconstrated, one and two family dwellings and town houses, and town houses have radiation mitigation preparation, construction incorporated.
But keep reading down.
It doesn't apply to three families. Well, it doesn't apply to three.
So, but you, but you, you just stated that you're going to put it in there anyway.
What we're going to do is what the state building code does.
What the state building code requires is just to put it's total mitigation piping into the.
Okay, that is what you said. You used those words. Do you want to put the pipes in?
The slab.
The slab.
For future use.
Right, so if it comes up, it can be tested.
Absolutely correct.
All right, now, I, I probably have ten more questions. However, I just received this just now. So I have, I have a lot of reading to do. But one thing I would ask of you, and it's making it very difficult for me. Picture what you're going to build.
There's elevations.
No, no, I'm not talking elevation. I mean, a picture of what it is.
I'll tell you right now, this is very simple. Go to Good Hill. You should, the whole commission should go to Good Hill.
I've been to Good Hill. I was there with what you built.
That was our last eight dash thirty G project. It's the exact same building.
Which one? There, there are several.
You know, there's, there's. There's two buildings and they're.
Are they the same size?
Identical. One thing that this building will not have on is the laundry room that's on the end. We have a separate laundry room there. And this one won't. So this is going to be the exact same building with three garages under it. The exact same plan, same bedrooms.
That's not a big deal. Now, one other thing I would like to. You said it's going to be the same exact size. Okay, can you take your property and put a couple of stakes in the ground to show me where it's going on that property? So I can go over and look at it.
Not really, because there's, the two back corners are in ledge.
So I'll know where it is.
You can do that.
No, no, no. You know, you know me. I like to look. I go to sidewalks. And, and I, and I study. Now, I don't do any of that. Not, not, now people were talking about fifty-five year old Tommy. I'm eighty years old. I don't rock mine. But I can walk anything. Okay, so I'm. I'll see, I'll see, I'll see you next. And I will have read everything and I will know what I'm talking about. Thank you.
Can I have one more question?
Go ahead, Bob.
This is a ten. Is this three family house that's going to be a slab on grade? No, no foundation?
No, no. There's a foundation because the foundation is the garage. The back of the, the back of the garage is the foundation of retaining. Well, that holds up this first floor and then the second floor and the roof obviously above. Three sided foundation with the garage.
I'm saying, is, is there more site work to be done there, like digging?
There's a little, there's a little bit in the back corners.
Very little.
Okay, that's what I was looking for.
The front's done. It's a little bit in the back corners.
Has the fire department seen your idea of what you're going to do to build those steps?
We just got those comments at four o'clock this afternoon.
That's why I haven't seen.
I did talk to Tom Gallagher yesterday because I had some other things about the back, how, you know, things would be filled in because there was some other comments that we've gotten. And we, I explained it to him. He was good with it. And then we got this comment today because he was worried about access for firemen and ladders. So basically, what it is, we're going to build stairs right up the right hand side along the stone wall that's still there up the property line of Mr. Sutton and our property. So they can access it. It's one step at a time. So Kenny, even you can do it because they're six inch steps.
I only have one question. So Good Hill Project, they are duplexes plus one, for lack of a better description. Yes, they're up and down.
They're tri-fleshed. It's like a townhouse, yeah.
Thank you very much. I, I had in my mind you were going to do garage.
So it's. No, it's just three in a row.
Thank you very much.
That'd be good. Thank you.
We have any other questions for the app? Going once. Based on the fact that we only received the health report at the meeting, I haven't received the fire marshal's report yet. We're going to continue the hearing to our next meeting. Which I didn't know with the data, so it's two weeks from tonight.
Twenty-six.
Public hearing will be continued till our September the twenty-sixth meeting.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay. Next is our business meeting. Now, I'm going to see Doug Cooney for Rich Tivitts. First item. For the record, Mr. McCollum and Mr. Wagner have both rejoined the meeting.
Yes, I'm here, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Mr. Stanley.
Point of information.
I would make a motion that we take a five minute break. All in favor? So moved. Make a motion to resume the September twelfth Bethel Planning and Zoning Commission meeting. Picking up where we left off with the beginning of our business meeting. All in favor? So moved. First item on the agenda, Mr. Cooney has been seated, right? We have that for the record. Minutes. Who has had the opportunity to review the minutes from our last meeting?
Minutes at eight twelve twenty-three.
Everybody's reviewed them?
Yes.
We have a motion to.
I just did. Motion, yes. Twelve twenty-three.
Second, all in favor? Bob, you okay?
No comment on the minute.
Go ahead.
A, a couple of votes that we took there, the numbers were off a little bit.
Yes.
Amanda's aware and I believe she was addressing that change.
Yes, uh, yeah. The votes were off by one.
Thank you, Amanda. Thank you, Bob. Anything else?
All in favor?
Okay, Mr. Cooney, any comments on the minutes?
No, sir.
Thank you very much. Next item, invoices. Apparently we have a news times invoice for three hundred and fifty-three twenty.
That's correct.
And that would be for.
Legal notices.
Thank you very much.
I make a motion. We pay the news times three hundred and fifty-three dollars and twenty cents for legal notice.
All in favor? Any nays? Any abstains, abstentions? So moved. New business.
New business under new business, you have an application to amend, um, the zoning regulations regarding the Route Six Zone in regards to commercial facilities. The request is to amend a previously amended text amendment to go from three stories to four stories for commercial use in the Route Six Zone. And I'm just going to reiterate for commercial use. The applicant is presently a hotel owner on Route Six and looking to make improvements to the property. I would suggest a public hearing date of October twenty-fourth, twenty-twenty-three.
So we need to make a motion to have that to the record, correct? Schedule a public hearing for Daya Tri Corporation for a zoning amendment, uh, four dot four E height. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor? Mr. Cooney? Mr. Cooney?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much, so moved. For the work session, we need to add an item to the work session. I make a motion to add the KMP Associates to the agenda for. Eight thirty G affordable housing application, forty-two Plum Trees Road.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Leggner, all in favor?
What, what address did you just go?
Forty-two. Any nays? So moved. Okay, we've added that, shall we start with twenty-two to twenty-four now? And. Miss or Mr. Pomazey?
At the last meeting, you requested, you took a consensus and asked me to do a draft. Resolution for this meeting, which I did, and I did, um, give you copies of it, I'll give you a copy, a hard copy of it now. To review. You're sure you can read that?
Maybe I have, don't have the right, my name's on it, so let's make sure it's correct.
Thank you.
Yes, you mind doing that?
Okay, motion to approve a method amendment prepared for twenty-two Nashville Road LLC. And Ilcarina Pomazi, depicting property situated at twenty-two and twenty-four Nashville Road. Bethel, Connecticut, dated two fifteen twenty-three. The commission understands the density, value, and flexibility provided in the adoption. Of the VC with the TOD overlay zone, the twenty-two twenty-four Nashville Road. Along with the flexibility provided by the zone, there is criteria established through the regulation. That should be considered along with the guiding principles of the transit oriented development plan adopted in two thousand. Eighteen. Reasons, the commission finds the proposed zone change in use for twenty-two Nashville Road to the VC with TOD overlay. Helps develop the transition from an industrial to a higher density residential use transitioning to a well-established. Single-family zone. It should be noted that the commission in granting the zone change requests the applicant incorporate the following guidelines. Into any applications submitted to the commission. Do you guys just say numbers one, two, three, or do you want me to read them?
I would like you to read them.
Okay. Number one, maintain the existing height requirements of the R-ten zone of the two and a half story thirty-five feet. Two, incorporate the existing residential structure with any proposals to be considered by the commission for twenty-two Nashville Road. Three, maintain human scale development for those who live within the building, but also within the neighborhood where it is proposed. Using elements found in the TOD regulations pertaining to architecture, effective ten one twenty-three.
Thank you very much.
You have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Discussion?
Yes, absolutely.
So, that I'm sorry to do, I should have done this earlier.
Okay.
In the lab, in where it says it should be noted that the commission in granting the zone change. I'd like to switch things around a little bit. I would like it to say. Requires. The applicant to incorporate the following guideline. Into any application submitted, and that would be number one. Maintain the existing height requirements of the R-ten zone of two and a half stories thirty-five feet. And request the applicant to incorporate the following guidelines, and that would be two and three. In whatever direction. I think if we have a high requirement, we need to be requiring that they do it, it's not a request. The other things, you know, we understand the existing residential structure. You know, we understand that that's problematic, and it's their building to do as they wish, and that would be a request. And also maintain human scale development. Is a request, I don't know that you can require that, so that would, that would be my change.
In regards to that, I understand what you would like to see done, but unfortunately, you cannot have it done, because this. The proposed zone change is to the BC zone, and presently, that property. The existing, um, BC. Zone allows for, uh, three stories.
Allows for.
Three stories, so that's why I purposely requested. That the requirements, the R-ten zone, be applicable, I can request, I can't require.
Understood, understood.
Yeah.
I take it all back.
We may like to require, but we can only request.
Understood, thank you.
And now I have a written, I'm asking.
Come on, spit it out, spit it out.
Do we have a motion on the table?
We've motioned.
And a second.
And a second.
Any other discussion, I'm just speaking for Ken.
I, I have a statement to make, too. I, I think this worked out a lot better than what we were trying to do the last meeting of trying to piece this together on the fly, so. I, I think this worked out well, and, and gives some definite structure and guidelines to what we would like to see committed in this project.
Thank you, Bob. All in favor?
Aye.
Mr. Cooney?
Aye.
I did, Mr. Cooney.
Alright, do it, make sure you run it individually through the board, please.
Alright, do it again. Paul Stanley.
Yes.
Kenny Grant.
No.
Ken Stevens, yes. Penny.
Yes.
Bob Leggner.
Yes.
Doug Cooney.
Yes.
So moved.
Thank you. Next item was sixty-one seventh street, East Gate, I believe. And under the same principles, you asked us to draw up a resolution. In regards to this application.
One not coughing, so here we go. Motion to approve, to approve a fifteen unit residential property, contain fourteen one bedroom units and one. Two bedroom unit as shown on the following drawings. East Station Place sixty-one, South Street, Bethel, Connecticut, prepared by Dvestis Civil Engineering LLC. Date four seventeen twenty-three, last revised six twenty, six twenty-six twenty-three. Including architectural renderings titled East Station Place, South Street, Bethel, Connecticut, by Verdi Design. Landscape plans entitled East Station Place by A2 Land Consulting LLC, dated four ten twenty-three. The special permit is for excavation and fill activities occurring on the property under section six point four of zoning regulations. The site plan approved with the DC zone with TOD overlay applied, meets the required talking under the regulations. For two spaces per unit. The application is approved with the following conditions. One, the, one through.
Right.
One through eight reasons. The, the proposed site plan and building is in substantial compliance with the TOD regulations of the town of Bethel. And will provide the opportunity for an affordable rental housing within the downtown area.
Second.
Discussion?
Just a point of information on bullet six, it should say structural engineer, not structured.
I made, I made that point earlier today, thank you very much.
And the copies that were handed out this evening, Doug covered.
It does.
Okay.
Correct, thank you. Okay, I make a motion that we approve the application for East Station Place at sixty-one South Street. Um, as read into the record by Kenny Grant. Second.
And we just need to vote.
You're just tired.
We need to vote.
You need to vote.
We need to vote.
Paul.
Yes.
Kenny Grant, yes.
Ken Stevens, yes.
Penny Kessler, yes.
Bob Leggner, yes.
Doug Cooney, yes.
Thank you very much, so moved. Next item we added to the agenda is KMP Associates LLC, forty-two Plum Trees Road.
You have that printed out?
You, uh, Paul?
Yeah, I, so I had emailed.
And I have to recuse myself from this.
Yes, that's.
I had, I had emailed Beth, asking to have a resolution ready. Um, in the, in the event that we were going to approve it. Uh, I got the feeling like last month, the meeting before, we were all on board approving it. We were just waiting for that, um. Health Department. And I didn't think there was any, um, hurt having it ready in case we needed it. Didn't need it, then, we, you know, it can go in the trash bin, but it sounds like we may need it, so. Um, I don't, do you guys want to discuss, is there anything to discuss? I'm in favor of the project, I don't know.
I, I think, uh, the, the way it's moved along, and everything that's been, been done, is, is going to be a credit to Bethel. I, I really think it's a great project.
I think it speaks. A lot to the applicant, that, the, learn about how much work they did behind the scenes before it was brought to us. With, um, like the town historian, who's, I think, in the unofficial role. But just doing a little bit extra to, to help maintain a little bit of history in town. To actually seem like they care about what the neighbors thought, doing something nice. Um, and I, I can't, it's, it's, it's just a nice project, I think it's a good use of the properties and keep that, the nice house, the historic home. Um, and turn it into something that's gonna be better use.
And, and keep, and, and to go to the extent of keeping that one piece of property clear.
Yeah.
For historical reasons, on the back, where the train would have been.
Yeah.
So I, I guess it's been very thoughtful and very well done.
And I, I don't want to disregard some of the public comments, so, uh, I looked over the bathroom designs, I think there's, in my opinion, there's plenty in room. Um, they were pretty clear that it's, it has the ability to be AD eight compliant, if needed, and they're for sale, so. It's not like a rental, if someone wants to buy a unit, they can go to the builder as they're getting built and say, hey, I need this tweak done. And I'm sure it will be done.
As, as the applicant explains that, yes.
Negotiated in.
Absolutely, positive.
Before you finish, again, because I'm gonna blame you on this, this one. Yes, this morning, there is a typo in here, in the very beginning, it talks about a special permit, there's no special permit. Associated with this project, there's no large amount of excavation and fill that has to take place. Um, if you would be willing to move number eight saying that it's special.
I don't have a copy of it.
Don't worry about it, if, I'm sure you would agree that it's okay, we're gonna remove number eight saying special.
Sure, we're gonna move number eight.
Do, do, you don't have a problem with that?
No.
That's, do we have to read that?
No, we're just gonna amend it and clean it up. We'll just clean out that, those two portions.
So then we have a motion to.
We'll do approve the application. I'll make a motion.
I, I have one question. The, uh, the right away on the railroad, for the railroad, the old railroad.
Right.
How do you maintain, will that be maintained within the, uh?
You mean mode?
That's taken care of by the property owner.
Yes.
That's what I mean, i- i- it, it should be some reference to it in the common ownership. Somebody has to go out there and plant their own trees.
I'm sure that that would be handled through the HOA.
Okay.
Okay, so can we have a?
A motion to approve the application.
We have a second?
Eight thirty G at forty-two Plum Trees Road.
Wait a second. Okay, now can we have a vote, Mr. Stanley?
Yes.
Penny? Bob?
Yes.
Doug?
Yes.
Kenny Grant, yes, motion passes. Come on, Matthew. Okay.
Comments from this submission? Deputy comments for the commission?
Not at this time, no.
That's it, right?
Anybody online, David?
Raised from the public for comments on Zoom, Mr. Chairman.
Second, all in favor?